Good evening. Use my microphone. I'm calling to order this city council work session for Monday, March 17th, 2025. And just to let everyone know, the recorder will call the role of councilors and then planning commission. So will the recorder please call the role?
Councilor Tigan.
Present.
Councilor Nishiyoka.
Present.
Councilor Matthews.
Here.
Councilor Gwynn.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Present.
Councilor Nordike.
Present.
Councilor Varnie.
Here.
Mayor Hoy is absent. For the planning commission, Commissioner Faat.
Here.
Commissioner Truitt is currently absent. Commissioner Freibach.
Here.
Commissioner Heller.
Here.
Commissioner Laura Midkiff is currently absent. Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner VR Brindell.
Here.
Commissioner Slater.
Here.
Commissioner Tev.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. I've asked Councilor Varnie to assist with this meeting tonight, and she will take the pledge of allegiance to start with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Councilor Varnie, do you have a motion for us?
I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilor Varnie, seconded by Councilor Matthews, to approve the special meeting. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Tigan.
Aye.
Councilor Nishiyoka.
Aye.
Councilor Matthews.
Aye.
Councilor Gwynn.
Aye.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilor Nordike.
Aye.
Councilor Varnie.
Aye.
Commissioner Faat.
Aye.
Commissioner Freibach.
Aye.
Commissioner Heller.
Aye.
Commissioner Laura Midkiff has joined us, and I'll take your vote as well. Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner VR Brindell.
Aye.
Commissioner Slater.
Aye.
And Commissioner Tev.
Aye.
All right. I think we are ready to move on with the housing production strategy.
Good evening, city councilors, planning commissioners. I'm Eunice Kim, the long-range planning manager in the community planning and development department. Thank you for being here tonight. We are here tonight to talk about the housing production strategy. Specifically, we're going to be focusing on the actions that are proposed to help promote housing development in Salem. We're really excited to hear your questions, your comments, and your input, as that will really help us refine any draft actions before we take the housing production strategy through the adoption process. That adoption process will include public hearings at the planning commission and the city council, so you'll see us again. So we're really excited to get started. Tonight, I'm going to be handing the presentation off to Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. They've been helping us throughout this project that started about a year ago. This project has been funded through grant through DLCDs, who are also thankful to have heard the state. And Beth, I hand it off to you.
Just one second. Sorry, Beth. I just wanted to note for the record that Commissioner Truitt has joined as well.
Thank you, and thank you for having me here. So we are going to run through a presentation about the housing production strategy, where we're also talking about very specifically a number of the actions in the housing production strategy, with the idea of getting your questions and making sure we understand any concerns that you have. So we're asking here again about additional input on the actions. So the housing production strategy, while it says production, it's not just about building housing. It's about preservation of existing housing. It's about housing affordability. It's about increasing access to housing and fair housing. And it's building on a lot of things that you've already done. So things like the cottage clusters that you helped build with United Way, your system development charge waivers for affordable housing and accessory dwelling units, that little project you did a few years ago called R-Salem, which rezoned a lot of land to allow multifamily and mixed-use development, as well as additional comprehensive plan policies, your safety and livability bond, tax exemptions for multi-unit housing projects, all the work that the Salem Housing Authority has done, is all building on that, and there's a lot more. But I don't want to take up an hour talking about all the more. So for most cities, this is an eight-year action plan, on most cities outside of metro. Because you adopted your housing needs analysis in 2020, and it's a little while ago, your housing production strategy, this first one, will be a six-year action plan. So it's about how the city promotes housing development to meet the unmet needs, which we'll be talking about here in a few moments, of residents in Salem, looking at what are the barriers to development of housing, to preservation of housing, to accessing affordable housing, and what can the city do to overcome those barriers. And so the policies we're going to talk about are things like regulatory, financial, land, and partnership actions, as well as a few other actions. We started with a much longer list, and we've been narrowing it down through discussion with stakeholders, discussion with this group over various points in times. So here we're going. So we started back in spring of 2024. We also did some market analysis that was really more related to the climate-friendly, equitable communities, but has helped inform the analysis that we've done for this and helped inform what actions that we're choosing for this. You are expected to adopt this housing production strategy with the changes that we hear from you as we go through this. In, you know, spring to early summer of 2025, you have until the end of 2025 to adopt it if you need a little more time after we're done this grant-funded project. So as I mentioned, we've done a fair bit of engagement. We're building on the prior engagement that you've done over the last four or five years. And we've done engagement with focus groups, with local organizations, so groups that serve people with disabilities, groups that serve different populations of color, those kind of organizations. We've had some community meetings and events, including talking with your equity roundtable. We did a public survey, a public webinar, to inform people of what we were finding and what we were hearing. We've talked with market rate developers of housing, as well as affordable housing developers. And then we've been in front of you once before, I think last probably fall or summer, and we've talked with some of you on one-on-one meetings. So what we're hearing is about the need to provide housing that is affordable, and what I'll call here workforce housing. And we'll talk about those terms a little bit more in a few minutes. But it's housing at all income levels, where you have the biggest gaps in every community I've worked in in Oregon, and I've worked across many, many communities, is in housing that's affordable at your middle income and lower. So housing that's affordable at your upper incomes, the housing market's generally building that. So how can you provide more support for people being able to become homeowners through the process, through down payment assistance, that kind of thing, working with your partners who are already doing some of that? The location of housing is very important, so that you're looking at more housing that's near transit, near amenities, in walkable neighborhoods. You'll hear the term high opportunity areas, talked about a lot. It's partially what that is. You also might look at areas of affluence, so areas that are more affluent. How can you get a wider range of housing in those kind of neighborhoods also? So of course, ensuring the quality and maintenance of existing housing is important, and bridging gaps between landlords and tenants, to the extent that the city can have a role in that, which we have some ideas about that, that's also an issue. So in talking with some of your lower-income households, your people from your refugee population, also your communities of color, what you often find is that landlords may not necessarily understand some of the barriers that there are for tenants accessing housing, and looking at opportunities to help bridge those gaps. And then providing a wider variety of housing. So housing like missing middle housing, which I know you've heard a lot about, and you're getting some interesting development around that, but also housing that can serve multigenerational households. So you've got two living areas attached together, more accessible units for people with disabilities, looking at single-level units or ground-floor units, also another variation for people with disabilities and your aging population. Before I go on, are there any questions? All right. So bringing you some data about this. So looking at the big problem, sort of the big picture, is that you've got rising housing costs, not surprising to any of you. About half of Salem's renters can't afford their rent, so they're what's called cost burden. They're paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And a quarter of homeowners cannot afford their housing costs. And so what we're showing you here on this graph is the rising cost of homeownership. So between 2012 and 2022, household income increased by 51% in Salem. Rents increased by 68%, so rents outpaced incomes. Housing sales prices increased by 173%. So they really outpaced incomes. This is leaving a lot of people unable to afford housing. So if we look at this in a little bit of a different way, what we're showing here is on our graphic is household median family income, or median area income, for a family of four. So a family of four that has 100% of median area income has earnings of about $91,000. They can afford about $2,280 a month in housing costs. That could be rent, it could be something else, mortgage. They can afford up to $274,000 in a home sales price. So when we look at your median sales price for housing, it's about $429,000. You have to have income of more than $200,000 to afford that. It's 160% of area median income. A lot of your households, as we'll look at in a moment, don't have income to afford that. Of course, some housing costs less, and some housing costs more, because this is a median. When we look at your average monthly rent for multifamily housing, it's about $1,700, including utilities. It's usually for a two-bedroom unit. So your household that has 100% of median family income, median area income, can afford that. Your household that has 80% of median family income, they can afford that also. But below that, those households can't afford those housing costs. And so when you're thinking about the housing production strategy, primarily what it's dealing with is the problems of housing for households with incomes below 120% of area median income. The acute problem is often below 80% of area median income. So that's where the problems are the worst. So when we look at this as a percentage of households and number of households in Salem, what you see is about 40% of your households have income of 60% or less of area median income. So for a family of four, that's about $55,000. They can't afford newly-built market-rate housing for rent. They can oftentimes, by the time you get to about 80% of median area median income, a household can afford those new market-rate costs. Not always. Sometimes newly-built rental housing costs more than those households can afford. But it's that below 80% of area median income, so about 52% of your households is the group of people that we're talking about here. When you think about newly-built housing, as I said, a lot of the newly-built, single-family housing is affordable at the highest incomes. So about 29% of your households fit into the above 120% of area median income. Before I go on, are there any questions about that basic data? Yes, sir?
Thank you for this. Can you go back just a couple slides to the increasing costs?
Yes, sir.
I think there's kind of a common perception in the city, or at least I've certainly heard it, that not just that the cost of housing in Salem is going up, but that it's getting closer to Portland-level rates. And I would expect, if that were to be totally true, that at some point, the gap between the Oregon average and the Salem average would be closed, but...
It's maintaining the same relationship, yeah.
So compared to other places across the state, the cost of living in Salem isn't getting any worse?
Well, isn't getting worse, worser. There we go. Than the rest of the state.
I said compared to other places.
Yes.
So it's not like Salem is actually becoming, quote-unquote, "as expensive as Portland" because everything's going up?
Yes. And compared to Bend, you guys are a steal, which Bend is, you know, $700,000 and more.
Right. A common part of my theme in this area is what's unique to Salem.
Mm-hmm. So a lot of this is like other Willamette Valley cities, leaving a side of the Portland region. So, you know, come south of Portland, you're an awful lot like Eugene in this. So what's common, what is unique about Salem is that you're in the same boat as pretty much everybody else in our medium and larger cities in Oregon. You're not as badly off. You're a little better off than some places, but your incomes are also a little lower. So when you look at income in the Portland area, the latest number I remember is 100% of area median income is somewhere around $116,000. I think that's the number there. So you're not worse than Portland, but your incomes are lower.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just trying to get the relationship between how all the statistics work together. And so on the same slide that Councilor Tigan was just talking about, there's a metric there, there's two of them. Half of Salem renters cannot afford their rent, and one quarter of homeowners can't afford their housing. And I'm assuming what informs that is this chart here, the financially attainable housing in Salem?
They are related information taken from, so that statistic about cost burden that you were just quoting is taken from the same source as this statistic about incomes.
Okay.
So they're both from the U.S. Census.
Okay. Because the only part I'm trying to wrap my head around, so it's like this financially attainable housing in Salem approximates that about 30% of your income should go to housing.
That is the HUD standard for it, yes.
And yet...
Housing costs include things like your rent, as well as selected utilities, like electricity and heating.
Gotcha. And yet, on most loans, like an FHA loan, HUD loans, those are all going to be a debt-to-income ratio of 45%, up to 50% sometimes.
Sometimes they're lower.
No, absolutely, they can be low. I'm saying the max DTI. So even though HUD standard is 30, their debt-to-income ratio, they'll allow for their own loans.
Sometimes they do, yes.
Okay. Just checking.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Goodman, on that same slide, to the left, you say that half of Salem's renters cannot afford their rent, $15,000.
Yes.
That's a huge number.
Yes.
And I don't want to just lightly go beyond that. So my question is this: If you have 15,000 folks right now that cannot afford their home, and we know we have so many current people being laid off throughout the state, are we taking into consideration those families also that are being laid off?
Well, no. It's worse than that. We just don't have great data about layoffs, they're so recent.
Right. And you said what I wanted to hear you say. The reality of it is, is that there are 15,000, but if the truth be told, it's a higher number than that.
Certainly is. The data I was looking for, as I was sitting here scrolling, is also information about households that are paying 50% or more of their income on rent. So 30% of Salem's renters pay half their income for rent.
For rent.
Those folks are in real trouble.
Real trouble. And so real trouble, which I would define real trouble as, they are on the brink of being homeless.
And when you look at this data here, you see the households that have income of 30% or less of AMI. Those are the households who are at risk of becoming homeless.
Yes, yes.
And I will say that I don't think that the people who are homeless and live in Salem are captured in this data.
I would agree.
So...
And so having said that, and bringing that into this particular space, because it's truth, but it's a hard conversation for some people to wrap their, you know, their minds around. And so I guess my question would be, what are we doing, I think, as a contingency plan to help those individuals who are about to lose their home?
Well, some of that is what we're talking about for the housing production strategy. You're getting to the policy question of what do we have in the housing production strategy? And one of the particular things that we've been considering in the housing production strategy was really about, what was it called? It wasn't a navigation center?
The resilience hub?
The resilience hub, yes. And because of various considerations, for right now, we've pulled the resilience hub out of the housing production strategy.
You've pulled what?
The resilience hub.
Okay.
Which is one of the ways that Salem had been looking at helping support people who are in homelessness, in homelessness.
So what I don't want to do, I don't want to get ahead of your planning, because I got a feeling that you're going to unveil some more of that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to hold my comment on that, and so, thank you.
Certainly. Yes, sir.
I'll ask one question. One of the things when we have these large policy conversations, and we're dealing with the demographics of the city, is that, you know, the city's ability to reach kind of all parts of the demographic is limited.
Yes.
I mean, there's some people that are so low-income, we don't have strategies that we're able to deal with. So when we look at this kind of range of income distributions, are there populations, demographics that we should focus on, that we have kind of the greatest opportunity to make a change, and there are other populations that we've just, given our resources, are not able to reach, and that, you know, other parts of government need to step up and address those problems?
I, I'm not going to answer your question, because I think that is a policy question, that's a normative question. And I have opinions about it. And one of my opinions, I think will probably be coming up in a slide or two, is about what cities can do to support development of housing. And cities can do a lot, but they can't do everything. And Salem has a financial problem. I'm sure I'm the first person in this room to say that.
Probably more.
Exactly. And so I think it is the decision-makers' decisions about what the city should be doing. I know that people like Eunice, and Michael, and other staff have certainly been talking around these ideas, and they probably have other opinions.
So at some point, then, we can look at some policy options structured by the demographics of the city, is that correct?
I think these are structured by the demographics of the city, taking into account understandings of fiscal issues.
Thank you.
If you had a big pot of money, a really big pot of money, you could do a lot. But somewhere, nobody has a big pot of money right now.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think one thing that I found a little interesting about the affordability metric is it talks about how much money you have or coming in at the moment. But, you know, if you account for like childcare costs...
Yes.
Or costs of food and groceries, or maybe your utilities, you might not have enough money to put away into savings afterwards. And so maybe even if you are above the 30% AMI metric that we're using for affordability, people might still be one or two checks away from homelessness, and I think it's important to include that in the affordability metric.
I think that is true. And the affordability metric we're using is 30% of income spent on housing, which is different than 30% of AMI. I know we're using 30% a couple of times here. So yes, certainly, when you start looking at childcare expenses, those are very high, so are transportation expenses. And I have wondered if the standard for spending 30% of your income on housing is an outdated standard. It is the one that we work within, given the policy context that we're working within. I can certainly say that spending 30% of your income, if you're a lower-income household, is very different than if you're a higher-income household. If I have income of $1,000 a month, and I spend $300 a month on housing, I have a lot, and this is pre-tax money, I have a lot different money to spend than if I have $10,000 a month, and I'm spending $3,000 on housing. Those are very, very different positions. And part of the reason that we look at difference in cost burden for renters and homeowners is that renters are generally more likely to be lower-income than homeowners. And then in the Housing Production Strategy report, we present information like the percent of renters who have income below $20,000, or between $20,000 and $35,000, what percentage of those households are cost burdened. And it's a very, very high percent of your lower-income households are cost burdened, nearly all of them. It's not a surprising thing when you think about it, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I'm going to proceed on then. All right. So here is the slide I was expecting us to come to. So when we're thinking about the housing production strategy, think about what it takes to get housing developed. And so this is for market-rate housing. Development can occur when you have public policy that supports it. So in other words, you're zoning enough land that's zoned in the right zones, of course. The city directly influences public policy. Your land, you have to have land that is vacant and buildable. That land has to have services, infrastructure. The city obviously has a role to play in land. You have to have market feasibility. So in other words, you have to have prices and rents that are high enough to support a profitable project. The city has limited influence on market feasibility. It has things like system development charges, which are very important to the city for infrastructure sorts of things, permitting fees, permitting time, those kind of things. You offer MuTip, which is a type of property tax exemption. That's another way that you can have some influence on market feasibility. But generally speaking, for market-rate housing, the city doesn't set rents. You kind of can't set rents, you can't set sales prices. And then you have to have access to capital. So the developer has to be able to access resources, like bank loans, for investment. And cities generally play a lesser role in capital. Sometimes there are grants or loans, low-interest loans, but those are usually for things like rehabilitation programs, that kind of thing, or first-time home buyers. So cities generally don't loan money to developers for building housing. They could, if they had the money to do it, of course, but most don't. So we're talking about all these actions in the context of what the city can do. So we've got these four categories, and we're going to talk about actions in each of these four categories as we go along. And, yeah. So the first one, yes, ma'am, sorry.
So you just went through that related to market-rate housing specifically?
Yeah.
Do you have a similar approach or commentary on the affordable housing? Because I feel like a city would have more ability to influence that in some ways.
Well, since Salem has a Salem Housing Authority, and it's within the city, you do, other cities that the housing authority isn't within the city, it's a little different. The housing authority is, of course, a partner. And so one of the bigger pieces there, differences there, is the capital stack. So where you get money to build housing that is income-restricted and affordable. And that's usually from many, many different sources. So affordable housing oftentimes has, you know, 10, 15, 20 sources of funding in it. And so the city sometimes, some cities, play a role in that, providing some gap financing. In terms of market feasibility, I believe that Salem exempts income-restricted affordable housing from system development charges, that when you're talking about a larger, multifamily building especially, that can... That, when you're talking about a larger multifamily building especially, that can be a significant amount of money. And so the city has taken that role. There are other things that cities do to support affordable housing, income-restricted affordable housing. And honestly, an awful lot about what we'll talk about in the Housing Production Strategy is examples of some of those things. Yes, ma'am? All right. I like the questions. Keep me from falling asleep up here. All right. So looking at regulatory actions, I mentioned public policy a few minutes ago. So thinking about, looking at your zoning code and changing it so that you can better promote housing development. So looking at, having staff look at your existing land use regulations, including your development and your design standards, to decide if further refinements are needed to remove barriers to housing. And so let me first say that I know nothing about Salem's zoning code. So anything I say here has nothing to do with Salem. If a city had design standards that cost a lot in terms of development, like bay windows or specialty, you know, materials on the outside of the housing, that can be something that increases the costs of housing. And so in an action like this, you would look at whether you wanted to change those design standards. And so that, this is what this is, is taking another dive into your zoning code, talking with developers, understanding the issues. You probably have a very good understanding of a number of issues already. And working with your planning commission and the public process to see where there are opportunities to further redesign your zoning code. When we think about this for unmet housing needs, it's really for housing needs for all populations. And when we're thinking about housing need for lower and middle-income households, it's often about smaller, more affordable units. So you guys did your missing middle housing. Are there lessons learned from that? Are there changes that you can make in that? That's one of the kinds of questions you may be asking in this kind of action. Yes, sir?
Less of a question, more of a comment. I provided kind of an example of something that might be considered as a revision to the zoning code. It's really kind of about, and it's on the agenda, I believe it's titled Floor Area Ratio Zoning or something similar. But I took a quick look at our zoning code for the MF2 or MU2, the Multifamily Zoning 2. And I had an issue, or I saw an issue, that left owners that maybe had a smaller lot at a disadvantage to those who own a larger lot. And there's more detail in the item that I included, but it's just, I believe, is just an example of why I think it's important to take a look at this stuff.
And so that is the kind of detail that, as the city is implementing this action, assuming it makes it into the Housing Production Strategy, that you would, you know, raise those ideas up through the discussions, and then have some discussion about, do you address it in your zoning code? Do you change your zoning code to address that? Or do you not? If you do, how do you do it? And all of those details, those very, very weedy details, that's the, that's the way you're going to keep your staff busy and keep the planning commission busy. Yes, sir?
I'm curious, just in terms of the description, I mean, this might seem obvious, but maybe not. So if the description is to revise the zoning code and it's going to meet these housing needs by population, what happens? Does it make it, are we, like, what's the filter through which we read the zoning code and amend it? The thing you said was, maybe the cost of the requirements?
That was one example.
So like, you read through the code and you say, this just leads to housing that's too expensive?
Well, somebody who knows more about zoning than I do, I used a really concrete example, because I understand that example, who knows about, you know, standards of setbacks, for instance, or height limitations and how those may affect feasibility, and talking with your development community to understand where there are pinch points. And so it's not necessarily just about what's expensive. It can also be about what's more time-consuming, you know, if you buy the idea that time and money are very similar in terms of development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I just had a question. When I'm looking at that unmet housing needs, and it says, need for more housing for lower and middle-income households, smaller, more affordable units, have we looked at this through a lens of actual family size? Because we're looking at it a lot through the actual financial impact, but just because an income might be lower, and therefore they can only afford a smaller unit, they may still be a family of five, and they're trying to squeeze into a one-bedroom because that's what their financial situation says they can afford. And so.
And so looking at opportunities for multi-generational housing, for instance, is certainly something that has come up, and we've got built into this, in this action potentially, and other actions. And so your point is well-taken, that you need units of all sizes, you know, smaller and larger bedrooms, number of bedrooms. You've also got an aging population, which tends to have smaller households, little lower incomes after people retire. So it's really about all different sorts of needs. But you're trying to summarize it down sort of very briefly.
So it sounds like we have kind of run an analysis on family size versus unit size that we're needing, and then?
It's not a specific, you need this many units of housing with this many bedrooms or something like that. But we certainly have information about incomes by household size, certainly. So, and then I think that more qualitative information you get through talking with service providers who are providing services to those communities, if you can't reach those communities directly.
Because my biggest fear with kind of the idea that we need more smaller units, because we need more units generally, and so we should fit as many units as we can into as small a space as we can, is that if our market actually says we have 40% households that have five people in them, but we've built a whole bunch of one-bedroom units, have we really solved a problem, or have we just shoved five people into a one-bedroom unit? And so.
And so I would imagine, I don't think we've got anybody here from the Housing Authority, do we? Okay. I would imagine if we asked the Housing Authority that they would tell us that there is also an important shortage of affordable units with three or more bedrooms. Those aren't necessarily large units. They're often multifamily units. But, yeah. I mean, that's a well-taken point. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to make a comment about that. I am an architect, and as, you know, when we work in the design field in general, things like that are taken into consideration a great deal. And in some ways, I think this, you know, nothing can be solved with a one-faceted approach. But I think design as a component of our Housing Production Strategy is going to be something, you know, very critical as we move forward, not just the numbers, as you mentioned.
And so it's good that we have you on the Planning Commission to provide that input. Yeah. Are there any other questions about this one? Yes, sir?
I was curious if you knew what, like, if the market, like, how that determines how many bedrooms, say, a developer constructs in an apartment unit? Do you know what controls that number?
Well, it's partially going to be the type of housing that they're building, and their, essentially their financials, their pro forma, what they perceive the market to be, who they're trying to serve, and thus what they think they can get achievable rents with, I would say. You may have a different answer.
I'll just add that market studies are often part of that due diligence period when you're looking at a potential development. Usually with the projects that we have worked on and worked with our developers specifically, or maybe more often in the affordable realm, that work is done through community outreach sessions, where we work with consultant groups, and you essentially try and get as much public input from potential families and residents who might live in those communities to ensure that you're getting the right balance of unit size, community space, and infrastructure within the community itself, not just the access in and out.
Yes, ma'am.
Some, zoning can get really nitty-gritty real quickly.
Oh, yeah.
However, you can see how those savings can really add up over time.
Yes.
We've already done away with a lot of parking requirements. The other requirements, I'm kind of curious, because again, market analysis will determine whether it makes sense or not. But one would be, especially if you're designing affordable housing, do you really need a washer and dryer in every unit? Or does it make sense to have, you know, a laundry room per floor? Because that, and whether we require that or not, I don't know if zoning requires those things. If it does, then we've already removed that barrier. I'm seeing head shakes from people who I trust in the room, so I'll take that as an affirmative. Then my next question is, I believe our zoning changes through our, we've already made, we've already moved a lot of barriers.
Yes.
And we're really, you know, you had like one slide that, you know, really doesn't demonstrate just how many changes we've already made. But I get it. We don't have time to look backward. We have to continue and move forward, because those challenges continue. So one thing I'm curious about, in my ward, there's a lot of big-box stores with enormous parking lots that were designed for the Black Fridays of yesteryear. And that's not a thing anymore. So I'm just wondering, what more would it take for these commercial entities who have these enormous parking lots that haven't been full in months, years even? What would it take for them to put even a few, I don't know if it's a cottage cluster or just, you know, one vertical unit with three stories? I'm just curious, what, is there something in here? I skimmed ahead, couldn't help myself.
That's okay.
I don't know if it's in here, but I'd be curious to know if that's one of the recommendations you have, if that's an area where they need more incentive, or whether we've already removed the barriers and the private sector's still not interested.
You know, I think I need to defer to Eunice on this one, unless she doesn't have anything new to say, because I don't know what you've done around housing in commercial areas, and whether housing is allowed in the kind of commercial areas where you've got big-box stores. Okay, it is.
Yes.
So that hasn't been explored. So that might be something that you dive into with something like this. You might defer it as an action that you take a little bit outside of your Housing Production Strategy, if you choose to do that. Or I haven't talked about what happens if you can't do some of the actions in your Housing Production Strategy, but you have a midpoint review with the state, and that's an opportunity to swap in new actions.
Sure. And the reason I mention it too is that we've talked about how important it is to cite housing along major transit corridors. And a lot of the big-box stores that I envision in South Salem, they are along high-traffic bus routes. And they are also walking distance to a lot of schools, a lot of grocery stores, and a lot of other amenities. So it could promote more walkability in areas that, right now, are extremely auto-centric. So it's something I would like to see if that's feasible, what with all the big bags of money we have lying around.
That is something I think we can note and look into some more in this. Did you have any other comments, Eunice?
I was just going to say, we've removed a lot of the regulatory barriers, right? We allow housing in our commercial zone and things like that. But I think one of the strategies is around, like, maybe another Mootip area along a frequent corridor, transit corridor. So that could be one of the strategies, like, where do we put that? Where's their most opportunity to do that type of housing near transit? And we have other kind of, how do we better support, like, infrastructure improvements that are needed in those areas to support the housing? So we have old water sewer, right, that needs to be upgraded before we can get that housing in those underdeveloped or underutilized areas. So we have some strategies that point in that direction, for sure.
And one last note is, I was thinking about it, I'm just not seeing housing built in quite those areas. You've seen in some of the big-box stores, restaurants, that kind of thing, smaller stores, built in their parking lots. I haven't yet seen housing. So that would be an interesting thing to see if that starts occurring.
Yeah, just, I'd like to endorse Councilor Nordahl's comment. If we look kind of spatially at the city, we have a huge portion of our land dedicated to parking lots.
Yeah.
And especially large portions, as Councilor Nordahl said, on key arterials, where we're trying to drive development because of bus routes. And then some of our climate-friendly, walkable areas here are also just, you know, Swiss cheese of parking lots. So I really think this is, I would hope that the council's willing to engage this issue because, A, they're extremely low value in terms of property taxes. They get in the way of kind of our walkability strategies. They're great opportunities for infill environment, infill opportunities. So I think that's, you know, definitely worth considering. They're also like not very good environmentally, as they contribute to stormwater runoff and heat line effects and other things. So, you know, developing a strategy, a kind of a comprehensive strategy to convert surplus parking or unnecessary parking into housing and better opportunities, I think is really an important conversation to have down the road.
And I will take one more comment on this, and then I want to go on, so that we get through the other, I don't know, dozen.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on, like, I guess maybe we're kind of getting close to Transportation System Plan Update territory. But I do think that housing and how people get around are very closely related. And a comment that I've heard from quite a lot of people is that they don't feel comfortable getting around Salem without owning a car. I mean, I'm able to do it, because I live on one of these frequent transit corridors. I'm comfortable with riding a bike on Commercial Street, which I know many aren't. But there's a lot of conversation about affordable housing, but we've kind of also a little bit mentioned about affordable transportation. And if we want to convert a lot of these large parking lots, or if we want to construct housing with less parking, we need to support, also support transportation solutions that allow these kinds of developments to happen and allow them to be profitable to build, preferably for market price. I know the bus line that I live next to on Commercial Street runs every 30 minutes on Saturday and once an hour on Sunday. When my partner and I say we want to go to the grocery store on the weekend, we went to Winko last Sunday, and we couldn't take the bus there, because we didn't want to wait an hour out in front of Winko, max, to, with our groceries, to get home. And that affects the marketability of any of the lots along that corridor, because they would then need that parking to get people to and from the grocery store. It's harder to sell the unit where you can't go anywhere on the weekend, or any of that matters. So I just wanted to explain, or just bring up, that affordable transportation is a big part of this.
Thank you. I'm going to take us on now, and we are going to talk about zoning changes that can promote accessible housing. So looking at ways to incentivize or require development of more housing that is accessible. And so about 16% of your population has one or more disabilities. Of course, not all of these disabilities are necessarily something that you would build into housing. But when you think about accessible housing, you think, of course, about mobility access, also access for people with hearing and vision impairments, other types of accessibility. I've been working with the state on the new system for doing this kind of work, this kind of housing planning. And one of my colleagues, who does a lot of work with fair housing, she pulled out a statistic, that's a national statistic, which I found really fascinating, which is that a very small percentage of housing that is accessible, has accessibility features, is occupied by people with disabilities. And so, you know, that may be an opportunity to look at different ways of regulating or requiring housing that is accessible. So I think there'll be some pretty interesting ideas floating around here, as we're continuing as the state to do work on this, that by the time you are working on this action, will probably inform the thinking. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. You just used the term "fair housing." Could you describe what that is?
And so when you think about fair housing, this is the work that Michael and his crew do. So we have a, federal laws about affirmatively furthering fair housing, so it's access to housing without discrimination. And so it's concepts like physical accessibility- And so, it's concepts like physical accessibility, access to housing in affluent areas. So, there aren't areas that are highly segregated in terms of race or ethnicity, also in terms of income. Those are all fair housing tenants. If you want a better explanation of fair housing, I might ask Michael to come up and, and make it, because he swims in that. Did I get it right?
You hit the high point.
Okay.
Can we defer that conversation?
Certainly. Uh, yes, please, I'm sorry. On the, on, on the phone, on the video, I apologize, I can't see your name.
That's all right, Joaquin is fine. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to mention something by way of comment. I really want to pair accessible housing with affordable housing.
Yes.
Because obviously, we have a shortage of accessible units, and it's very onerous to modify built infrastructure to make something accessible. And so, it becomes a real kind of financial inequity for, for folks with disabilities in Salem. But a lot of folks with disabilities are on fixed incomes. And so, it would be really important to me, in whatever language or policy that was developed, to, to pair those two concepts together, the one of accessibility and affordability. And I also think, your point that you touched on at the end of your opening comments on this section was around giving priority to folks with disabilities and filling those units. It seems to me to be odd to make, go through all the trouble of making things accessible and then not filling the folks who, who need them when we know the need is there. And finally, I would just also note that we know that anywhere between 2/3 to 70% of our neighbors experiencing houselessness claim, identifies having disability. And so, while not, it's not necessarily a one-to-one relationship where, you know, disability leads to houselessness, but we know it's a common experience, we know that, that something like this would go at least some distance towards keeping folks housed in Salem. Thank you.
And so, to reinforce what you said about affordability, we do know that statewide, when you look at statistics about people with disabilities, they are more likely to be cost burdened, so not to be able to afford their housing. People with disabilities are more likely to have lower incomes than the overall average. So, any other questions or comments about this one? All right. So, then, looking at updating your zoning code to perform, to preserve non-conforming housing uses. If you think about a geeky action, this is one of them. So, as you've made zoning code changes, some housing that is existing doesn't fit with what your current requirements are. And so, if that housing is destroyed, it can't necessarily be rebuilt easily. And so, that's changing this so that you can allow non-conforming housing to be rebuilt. Yes, sir.
Does this non-conforming housing include, like, like say you have, you own a single-family home in a multifamily-zoned area, if, say if that building gets destroyed and you could reconstruct that? But also, if you own a multifamily structure in a single-family-zoned zone, will that structure also be able to be reconstructed?
I believe that is the case. So, Eunice said, "We want to look at all of that."
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a number or some sort of percentage of what homes don't qualify for these burn, or are on burn lighters right now?
No, we do not.
Okay, so we don't actually know like how much this will make an impact?
No.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Goodman, this may be a question for Michael, I'm not sure. Are you doing a presentation later on, Michael, or no?
No, I hadn't planned on it.
Okay. Get ready for just in case. So, so this goes back to fair housing. Can we ask questions about that?
You can ask questions.
But is, is that on your to-do list for tonight or no?
Some fair housing. We've got some actions about it.
Okay, so, so your, your second bulletin right there, the preservation of existing housing identified as a need for housing for certain groups? Doesn't that fall in the category of fair housing?
Yes, potentially.
And so, what does that look like in real life? Like, if you're trying to preserve housing for certain demographic groups, what does it look like? Or is that just in theory?
Well, I think what it is, is looking at the fact that non-conforming housing may be more frequently occupied by people in those kind of groups. This is an issue, I think, that was brought up in some of those discussions with, with people in the Latino community or people with disabilities. So, part of what's informing all of this is all of those discussions that we've had. So, that's why we have that bullet point there.
And wouldn't it be fair to say that depending on where you want to build something, people in that community may have, they may object to certain housing moving into their area? Wouldn't it be fair to say that?
True for, for any community, yeah?
For example, if I wanted to propose building a juvenile justice center in West Salem, I can imagine, I can imagine what folks are going to say. And so, when it comes time to find housing, affordable housing for everyone, do we actually look at it in a fair, from a fair perspective? Do we really? And again, that's in theory versus practice. Hard question, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I, I don't think I can answer that question for you. What I can say is, you know, when you think about non-conforming housing as an attempt to preserve your existing housing, presumably that, that housing wasn't just somebody decided, "I'm gonna tear down my house today." They had a fire or something. And then you find that you're not able to, to build a new unit that was equivalent to what you had before. And so, that's what this issue is really about.
It seems to me that there's a lot of policy gaps here that we would have to like, on one hand, you have fair housing. On the opposite side, you have zoning. And although there have been a lot of barriers that we've removed, I think one of the barriers that we will run into would be public opinion.
Certainly, it is one of the barriers.
I can see Eunice right there, I can see you're like, okay.
Eunice wants to come up and talk.
Because this is a conversation Eunice and I, we've had for years, so.
I was just gonna say that one of the things we tried to do when we updated the comp plan and rezoned land across the city was to allow for at least multifamily affordable housing in areas that it typically has not been allowed. And we did meet resistance, but we did, we were able to rezone some land. And so, we do have a policy that's really around allowing affordable housing and mixed-income housing dispersed across the city in areas of high opportunity. And that's kind of getting to that idea of having maybe more affordable housing, mixed income in our areas that traditionally have not.
Right, and the reason I bring that up is because it's a sensitive topic, right? And people don't want to talk about it, but I do. Because at the end of the day, and I'm gonna use one of your words, Eunice, you use the word "resistance," right? Because when you have people that are, that have wealthy means, that automatically gives you a voice. But when you are a part of a community, that if you are someone that is disabled, if you are a veteran, if you're a person of color, if you come from one of those marginalized communities, you don't have a strong voice. So, your only alternative to getting into affordable housing is that you need people either in this seat, or in these seats, that can either see you, or they're gonna turn around and fight for you. And I'm not convinced that when it comes to affordable housing, that we fight for all those individuals who needs, who needs a home. Because I can see you smiling, so you don't have to comment. Because at the end of the day, those same very people who need a home, we would easily say, "Well, it's not my responsibility. You didn't have enough money to afford the place."
Part of the reason I'm smiling is that this is a, a large part of the important work of the HPS is raising up voices of people who have not been heard, who have been historically marginalized. And so, part of the, well, one, I'm gonna say, we've gotten into this position through decades.
Yep.
And when you talk about historically marginalized groups, it's more than decades. And you're not gonna solve this problem in the next six years. And so, what we're trying to do is build more equitable access to housing. It's not going to be equitable at the end of six years. It's not going to be equitable at the end of the next HPS, but building towards that. And so, a number of the actions in here really are about access to areas of affluence, which is what you're talking about.
Right, because, and we can be about this all night long, because eventually my, my colleagues, they're gonna be like, "Okay, Dr. Brown, listen, move it on, move it along." Because if you really were to have a hard conversation about it and speak truth, if you're going to build affordable housing and you want the value of your house to maintain itself, people are going to say, "Do not put that in my property, or near my property, because it's gonna lower the value of my house." And people don't like to talk about that.
Well, all right, so, channeling myself 20 years ago when I was in planning school, there's a lot of studies that show if you build affordable housing so that it fits into the neighborhood, that you don't have that negative impact on home values or on, on housing values around there. And looking at the missing middle housing types and moving those more into your more homogeneous, single-family areas, that's another way of doing the same sort of thing. It's for people more with middle incomes. Missing middle housing isn't necessarily affordable in the way that you're talking about. It's more affordable, but not necessarily affordable at that low income. On the other hand, where I live in South Eugene, just before I moved there, you know, 25 years ago, there was an affordable housing development that was townhouses that, let me tell you, South Eugene kicked, kicked hard about that. You can't tell that they're affordable housing at this point. And so, you have some pioneers, essentially, and people, well, I, I mean, it's much bigger than, than this conversation right here, but how do you take your nimby's and make it more yimby's? Yes, in my backyard. And that, I think, is some of the longer-term work of the housing production strategy and Oregon's housing needs analysis. So.
Yeah, and thank you. And again, I would say, we are fighting against systems, right? If we were to have some honest, real talk, we have systems that in place that have been purposely put there by policy, by policymakers, most of them will do not look like me.
Yes.
That, that's real talk. And so, what happens is you have a system that perpetuates itself over and over again. And on one hand, we're trying to have more housing for people who can't afford it, but at the same time, we don't care. As long as it's not in my backyard.
Well, some of us don't care. I, I would love to invite you sometime up to, to Echo Northwest.
Invite me away, I love a good tour, I'll bring Council Matthews with me.
Oh, there you go. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm just trying to come back full circle to what this is saying. Update the zoning code to preserve non-conforming housing. So, what I'm picturing, so I'm just trying to make, see if I'm on the right track. What I'm picturing are some of homes that we have, like in an older neighborhood of Salem, houses built in the 1930s, 1940s, before we had zoning codes. And some of those properties have been turned into a duplex. Or they have, and I know some in the Inglewood area where there was a carriage house, and they turned that into an ADU before an ADU was a thing. Is that what we were trying to come back full circle to say? That sort of non-conforming, I mean, I'm just trying to.
I, I, I don't necessarily think it's about your, I'm going to hazard a guess that your, your ADU in that case is illegal. It wasn't a permitted ADU. I think it, you were just talking, whispering about setbacks. And certainly, your, your new zoning standards might not allow you to rebuild the same house that you had there before. So, it's rebuilding the same structure that you had there before, and that's what this is really about. I'm not sure that it's about the illegal uses that have gotten by because they weren't recorded.
No, I, I get that, I just feel like we were kind of getting off track of what this was saying.
We were.
So, that, that's, I was just trying to understand around my head around where we were at.
Are there any other questions about this action?
I'll just make a comment that I don't think that non-conforming uses is like a significant issue in that rebuilding a house. Is that, am I wrong on that, Eunice? Is this, is this like a big issue that we're having to deal with, or is this kind of a, a smaller point that we should check into?
Well, we've made a lot of changes to, to have something that we call continued uses. We're trying to give more rights over time to things that were there that don't meet the code today. But I think because we've made changes over time, there's inconsistencies. And a lot of it is like, in some zones, we allowed, allow you to rebuild, and it's fine, it's a continued use, et cetera. In other zones, we haven't touched in, in a while, so we want to take kind of a full look and kind of make some consistency. So, it's less dependent on, "Oh, I'm, I'm in a new zone, I'm okay if I rebuild." Like, we're trying to kind of make.
So, we want to make sure that it's equitable across the city, that everyone has the right, okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Some of these actions are, are big and hard, and some of them are not as big and hard. Yes, sir.
Sorry, excuse me. So, I just, I want to make sure that I have a clear understanding on what the end result of all this will be. So, when we're all through with this, I don't think it happens tonight, because tonight's a work group, but eventually, council will essentially vote on this, on whether or not they approve or don't approve this housing production strategy. Is that correct?
You, you have to adopt a housing production strategy. If there are actions in this that you don't want, you do have choices to remove them.
And so, the only reason I say is it feels almost idealistic, which is great, but we don't actually know the impact of any of these ideas, right? So, like, it's, we've talked quite a bit tonight about this non-conforming use, but we don't have any statistics or any knowledge about how much will this actually impact our housing production?
Well, you'll have that in housing production strategy, like this one would probably be labeled "small."
Okay, but like I say, it just seems weird that like in the end, we're gonna vote on things that are supposed to increase our housing production, but we don't actually have any indicator on how much that's going to be.
And it will be in the housing production strategy. Yeah, it's not a detailed, you know, it's not gonna be as detailed as you want because each of these things are supposed to be their own project that you're engaging with over the next six years. And there's a lot of detail layered into that. I'm gonna continue on, otherwise, we're never gonna get done. You guys will be here at midnight cursing me. All right, so, the next one is about the permitting process. So, I always hear that a city can improve its permitting process, and that's what this is. Essentially, looking at opportunities to streamline the permitting process, offer more assistance, improve the permitting, permitting application center portal, et cetera. And so, this is an, an action to respond partially to what we have heard from developers about wanting easier permitting process. Yes, ma'am.
I get to deal with permitting process a little bit. So, would that put any restrictions on how much feedback we get back with revisions that permits? Like, you submit a permit, there's a list of things that are required for you to change, you address those, you resubmit, and then there's another list of changes to update on your plans. Is there any kind of restrictions we can put on? The city has one to two reviews before that's capped off, and then we can proceed with a permit application for approval?
I think as long as what you're proposing isn't illegal, and I haven't heard that that necessarily is, that is the kind of choice you could choose to make. I, I think there's a balance there to make sure that, that, I think, some permits are more complete than other permits. So, so, yes, sir.
I've heard some pretty crazy horror stories out of Seattle where like, big housing projects have gotten held up in like, design review for like, almost a decade because of, you know, to me, pretty minor things like exterior flashing, or where your windows are on the structure, or does it have an overhang? I would, in my mind, when I see improve the permitting process, I'm imagining something that would prevent a major housing project from going forward, or.
I don't think you necessarily.
I don't want us to be stuck in design review for a decade on.
I don't think you have to have a horror story to, to have some, some incremental improvement. So, I don't think anything we've heard are, are those kind of problems. Happily, Salem is not Seattle. But there's probably still opportunities for, for some incremental improvement. Are there any other questions about this one? Okay, you've got something that's called a ready-build program. It's for accessory dwelling unit designs. So, you could expand that program to include some middle housing designs and/or additional accessory dwelling unit designs. So, what these are, are designs that are architectural designs, that you've already done the review of them. And if a developer uses it, or if a, you know, a, a single person who's building an ADU, they use it and they're applying it appropriately, they're through that hurdle. So, it's easier for them, less expensive for them. Again, this is a fairly small action potentially, because a lot of housing wouldn't necessarily be right for ready-build, but especially accessory dwelling units. And middle, middle housing could be, could be there. So, yes, sir.
Sorry, to clarify, when you say "middle housing," are you meaning things like quadplexes?
Townhouses, quadplexes.
Six-unit apartment buildings, stuff like that?
I don't think that, okay, so it is things like duplexes, quads, tries. So it is things like duplexes, quads, tries, all those kind of plexes, cottage housing and townhouses. Those are your middle housing types.
Okay. Thank you.
Just watching Eunice out of the corner of my eye to make sure she wasn't going, no. All right. And, yeah. So then, a financial action, and this is a biggie. Creating a new urban renewal area in your north waterfront area. So I imagine that most of you are familiar with urban renewal. And this has the opportunity to improve the area, you know, give more access to it, support development of housing, including income-restricted housing, and address infrastructure issues. When you think about a city not having a lot of funding, urban renewal is often one of the tools that are used to support redevelopment that leads to long-term, well, long-term redevelopment that wouldn't have happened without that kind of funding. And so the north waterfront area is an area we looked at, and the, I think the Salem Urban Renewal Area has been directed to draft an urban renewal plan. So that urban renewal planning process would be the implementation of this action, and presumably, it would include projects that support affordable housing. It may support also market rate housing development in transit areas. There any questions about this enormous action?
Let's do it.
Sorry, did I just cut in line?
I just would like to know, for all of the proposed URAs and Mootips and so on, every time, we are taking away taxpayer dollars from spending on anything else. It would be important, when we get to that time, we're going to want to know, what is it going to cost to create all these things? Because, as you know, we have enormous needs for our library, our parks, our Center 50+ and all the other great things that this city does. So there's a trade-off every time we provide a tax incentive. And I just want to see, have a clear-eyed decision point for myself and for the rest of council.
And what I would say is that would come in the development of the urban renewal plan. In something like the housing production strategy, you don't get anywhere near the level of detail that you need for that kind of clear-eyed discussion. So. All right. Then, another version of this is looking at single-property urban renewal programs. So you use this for the jewelry apartments, and this is where you grant an urban renewal for that particular property, to provide property tax rates to multifamily housing. And so this, like anything else, you should make sure that you're getting, getting out of it what you are putting into it. In other words, getting the public value out of it. So I would imagine that this kind of thing may well include development agreements, that kind of thing, agreements about affordability, mixed-income housing.
So I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break, so we all have a moment to stretch our legs, get something to drink. So then we'll bring you back, okay?
That sounds lovely.
We're going to try to stay on track. These have been great questions, but there's a lot of information to be presented. So we are back to our meeting. Thank you.
There we go. Certainly. So I'm going to take us on to the next action, which is about looking at an urban renewal program for middle housing. And what would that look like? And the answer to that, in all honesty, is that would need to be discussed. It's an action that will take a little more time than some of the other urban renewal actions, because some of them are well-understood or in process already. So the idea here is looking at housing, ways to support housing that includes two-, three-, four-family housing, as well as cottage clusters. So you can support development of more of that, including in areas of affluence.
Ms. Goodman, just to be fair, to be continued, is that what we're saying, at least for that particular slide, Slide 21?
It's to be continued in development of the action.
Okay.
I think there's a lot that needs to be developed before there's a lot of discussion about it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I believe that Salem is on course for.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jordan Truitt, for the record.
Sorry. Where's the voice coming from?
Okay. Chiming in here real quick. URA funds, urban renewal area, are those specific to housing and/or affordable housing, just generally, across the board, as it's currently structured?
No. They can provide, they can provide funding for housing and affordable housing, but they're also for other types of redevelopment, oftentimes, infrastructure development, is something that's done through urban renewal really frequently, because infrastructure is very expensive.
And do nonprofits who do not pay property tax count, or are they eligible for URA
So I think what you might be asking is.
I think we have Ms. Rutherford, who's going to come to the podium.
Oh, thank God. Yes, please.
Kristin Rutherford, Director of Community Planning and Development. In Salem, there is a council policy that requires a nonprofit to obtain an exception in order to receive an urban renewal grant. So it is allowed by law. It's just council policy here that has created that prohibition.
Any other, any other questions for Ms. Rutherford while she's at the podium?
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess, speaking about URAs, URAs are one of the city's most lucrative opportunities for development. And if we want people to develop in the city of Salem, they have to be incentivized. And with limited options, URAs are some of the, one of those major incentives. But if we're using URAs for development of nonprofit developments, and developments that do not pay back into the fund and do not contribute to property tax, then perhaps there's a solution here. But it is concerning to see new developments and major developments on prime real estate that do not pay back into the fund through property tax. So URAs are very enticing, but if the nontaxable entities consume the bulk of the funds and there's very little left over, then does that provide, or does that become a concern for those funds for affordable housing?
So during the nine years that I've been with the city and working with the Urban Renewal Agency, I can't think of any instance where we have used urban renewal funds to fund a project that is a fully affordable project. We have provided urban renewal grant funds to projects that have had a percentage of the units as affordable units, but not a project that's been 100% affordable. And of the handful of grant exceptions that we provided for nonprofits, those have not been housing-related. The first one that we did, after I came to the city, was for CTEC to help fund the build-out for the school. We did another one related to Arches, and that was around the time of the pandemic to help with improvements, to provide homeless services. There's another one that we will be bringing forward, probably in the April timeframe, that would be for the Elsinore. But they're very limited.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please continue.
And just to be clear here, middle housing is typically market rate housing. So it's housing built not necessarily by nonprofit developers. Occasionally, it is. So the city of Salem is going to be looking at its system development charge methodology in this upcoming next year or two, I believe. And SDC is used to support development and maintenance of your, well, not maintenance, but development of your infrastructure. It's very important that you have your SDCs balanced, and there is quite a complicated method for doing that. So what this action is, is as part of the study that the city is already expecting to do, looking at opportunities for establishing SDCs that are specific to middle housing or smaller units, rather than a flat SDC necessarily. And so that will require a lot of balancing, so that you still have the necessary SDC revenue from that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So SDCs are something that I certainly want to understand more fully, and as we go through this, and how they will be charged, what losses we may have, how can we balance that? I'm just basically going to ask the question, will that be something that we'll have opportunities on later? You're just talking about it now, but I know that I would like to spend more time on this in, at the appropriate time.
I would imagine, and Eunice is nodding yes, so yes. Part of implementing this action is doing that full SDC study, which will be coming in front of the city council.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about this action? All right. So looking at creating a new multi-unit housing tax incentive program, affectionately called Mootip, looking at that on a new corridor with frequent transit services, such as near the chariots core network. So you have an existing Mootip area in downtown, and what it does is it provides a property tax incentive for developing, I believe, usually, mixed-income housing, so a certain amount of housing that is affordable. I think the city in 2021 created affordability requirements for Mootip, where you've got projects with 50 or more units must provide at least 15% of the units at rents affordable to households with income of 80% or less of area median income. And so this is an opportunity to create housing that is, well, hard to achieve, that is both mixed-income as well as market rate housing together. And if I'm remembering correctly, your Mootip extends for up to 10 years. It is a tax exemption that the city council has in a lot of, you've got criteria for it, of course, but you've also got a lot of autonomy in whether you choose to grant it or not. So you establish a particular area where Mootip is eligible, and again, looking at transit service areas would be a very smart place to look. And then, as developers are interested in it, they apply for it.
Question.
Yes, sir.
And I promise it won't be 10 minutes. Mootip, the waterfront area, excluded from being a Mootip, correct or no?
Correct.
Correct.
And why? I know you're thinking, here goes Dr. Brown again. I'm just curious. Thank you.
The core area for the downtown area is geographically defined, and north waterfront is outside that area at the moment.
At the moment?
Yes.
So we could change it?
You can, as this suggests, create other areas, yes.
Really? Okay. Thank you.
My boss wants to have a, no.
It's on record. Michael said we could change it.
But just to clarify and question, is that in the, is that in the chariots core network?
North waterfront?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
And I believe Council Arvarney had a question.
Thank you very much. Similar to the SDCs, I think, looking at the Mootip gives us an opportunity to be really creative in incentivizing not only affordable housing, but also some of our other unmet housing needs. I think that's an area we can definitely work with.
And there's a lot of autonomy with that particular program, where cities can set the standards that they want, the criteria that they want. Yes, sir?
I guess the one thing that I would be concerned about with something like this is if we're, is this program optional? Can somebody, can a developer opt out?
Oh, yes. A developer has to submit an application. And so they have to actually want to participate in it. This can also be called voluntary inclusionary housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We have a question from Joaquin. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly comment. I think it was President Slater who just said, asked, is it in the core network? And I wouldn't be doing my due diligence here if I didn't mention, if for no other reason than as a chariots board member, that we go where housing is. And so, you know, if, when we're thinking about where planning, where to build housing, where people are, there's this dance in Salem that we do around, well, where is the network? And then, when the network provider goes, well, where is the housing? And so if this is a priority for folks, then think of it as that, and transit will follow.
And so that raises an important piece. With all of these actions, you've got really important partnerships, and those will be discussed more in the report. Dr. Brown?
And Ms. Goodman, you use the term voluntary inclusionary housing. Is that gonna, are we going to talk about that later on, too?
No. Are you asking about inclusionary zoning? No, we weren't going to necessarily talk about that.
Please don't, because I don't, folks think like, we're off-topic again. But I think you, because you kind of threw that term in there, right? And you know I'm listening.
I did.
And so if, I think that's a term that maybe on down the road, we may have to like, unpack and talk about.
Well, the advantage to Mootip in a lot of ways is its very voluntary nature, that it is something that a developer chooses to opt into, rather than other types of inclusionary zoning, which are a longer conversation. And I'd be happy to talk to you about them offline. Yes, sir?
So just so I have a clear understanding exactly what the Mootip is. So it's essentially, we'd be providing a tax subsidy to the developer for not paying their property taxes for X amount of years, because they're building affordable housing, at least partially.
Yes.
Or it would have to be 100%, or that's something we would determine later on.
I don't believe it's 100%. It would be a portion of the housing would be affordable.
Gotcha.
It's a way to make it more financially feasible to build that housing that's more affordable.
Right. And so to Council Nordak's point, it basically eliminates it from the general fund, the tax income.
For the time that it is tax exempt, yes. But it doesn't eliminate it for all time.
Gotcha. Even if it's just a partial, though, it eliminates it for the entire property.
For the time you've granted the tax exemption, yeah. One more question, then I'm going to take us on. So I'm getting thrown out.
Last one. I just wanted to bring up that it would be important to define what near transit is. Is that within right on the core network, like on the same street? Or is that within a five-minute walk of the core network?
And I think that is one of your implementation actions on this particular action. So that is part of the discussion. Ah, I'm sorry. Commissioner, on the screen.
Hey, Commissioner Truitt. Who is the governing authority for Mootip?
I believe that is the city council. Ah, evidently, Kristin says I answered right. It is the city council.
Does the school board play any role?
Ah, okay, yes. Ah, okay, yes. Yes, that's why I came down. So the City Council can elect on its own to an abatement of our percentage of the taxes. To get a full tax abatement, it requires typically the school district, or if not the school district, then the county, and enough other votes to get us to, I'm looking at Michael, is it 51%? Yeah. And I believe that the school district is reimbursed for that by the state. So the state backs up, I think, the lost revenues.
Okay, thank you.
I know it applies to urban renewal a lot, so. Okay, well, evidently, not sure it's true.
Okay. Did you have anything else to add, Kristin?
No, I'm just, I was looking to see if there was a follow-up question from Commissioner Truitt.
Lot of conversation, but no questions, it looks like. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll go on. So looking at an opportunity to provide home buyer assistance program, such as a down payment assistance program or assistance with closing costs, it could target specific household incomes, such as those with incomes of 60% to 80% of AMI. And it might also include home buyer education workshops. This kind of thing would be paid for with, I believe it's your home funds as you're looking at that, so federal funds that you've got. And it would be a way to help people enter into homeownership. Yes, sir?
Do we have information on how many people find the down payment to be the barrier as opposed to maintaining the actual annual cost of the home?
I don't think there's necessarily information about that, but it is a very commonly named barrier to entering homeownership. And then you can also look at other rehabilitation sorts of programs to support the maintenance, the major maintenance costs that you're talking about. Yes, ma'am?
Again, this might be more of a homework assignment for another time, but you say a potential revenue source would be home funds, but if we already have home funds committed elsewhere, I just want to know, what's the opportunity cost of using home funds for this if we have other worthy things we can spend it on? We don't have a bunch of that sitting around, I assume, right?
We do not have a bunch of that sitting around. We get about $650,000 a year on average. And if you were to, I've spoken to Marion County, who has run a down payment program using their home funds, and what they have found is to be effective to the individual client is they have to go almost to $100,000 of down payment assistance. So as you can see, it would be a very small but benefited group that would get an advantage there. And that kind of trade-off that you're talking about is something that's all got to be incorporated in here with respect to, do we use home funds for construction subsidy? Do we use home funds for down payment assistance? Do we use home funds for a lot of different things?
I would just be concerned that that's a lot of money for not serving as many people as I would like. That would be my number one concern about that. I mean, I'd like to help them all, but that's just not possible with our budget.
And Mike, while you're there, I just have a quick question. I know that the funding, the federal funding for the CBDG has come in, but there's uncertainty with what the future may be. Am I correct on that?
No, ma'am, you're very correct. The, we have the funding for this fiscal year already. That's set, but for fiscal year '26, it has not yet been told to us by HUD that yes, you have this allocation.
Thank you. Great.
I don't know who the right person would be. I guess I was just looking at the, so this home buyer assistance and the 80% AMI or less, right? And then kind of looking back at that previous, way back in the beginning of this meeting, we talked about the AMIs, and looking at kind of what their 30% AMI would be. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is it seems like we're going to create this perpetual problem by doing this. We provide them their down payment, and then they purchase a home that's going to have a payment on a monthly basis that's going to be higher than their suggested 30% AMI likely, because unless the down payment we're providing is a very large down payment that's reducing their actual monthly payment in such a significant way. So it seems like we're kind of just perpetuating an issue by saying we're going to provide the payment, or the down payment so that you can have an overly, still overly cost burdened home. Does that make sense?
It does. It is a series of trade-offs. And as you point out, to be very effective, you would have to buy down the monthly to where it could be handled. And of course, as Counselor Nordak pointed out, when you do that, you're shrinking the number of people that you can, you can help.
So I guess my question is, so is that the goal with this program, that we would purchase it down to where an AMI would be at 30% for those people? Or the, sorry, the payment would be at 30% of their AMI?
Well, the goal that we've got stated here is 60, 80.
So the confusion is the difference between cost burden and AMI. You're talking about 30% or less of their housing costs, of their income spent on housing costs.
Right.
So that's the idea, is that you provide a large enough home buyer assistance that they aren't paying more than 30% of their income for housing costs. And you may achieve that if you're looking at combining this with some other program. So if you have a community land trust that is building housing in town, then maybe, you know, you're pairing this with that so that it's more effective. Now, you're absolutely correct that this doesn't help a large number of households, but this is one of the opportunities to help people become homeowners. And if this is the kind of thing that you'd like us to consider removing from the, from the housing production strategy, we'd certainly like to know that.
I don't know that removal is what I'd be looking for. I apologize, I kind of spoke without, or raised my hand, but I think for me, I just, I guess I would need to know, like, what projection are we looking at and how much down payment we're considering on a regular basis? Are we talking that we're have to put 50% down on some of these houses to get us to that 30% cost burden? Because if that's the amount of down payment, it's a pretty hefty down payment. Right?
It is. I can give you a concrete example that we have under construction right now. Our community housing development organization is building a 24-unit development, single family or multifamily, not multifamily, middle housing down on McClay. And they've asked us for a $300,000 down payment assistance program to help all of the buyers of that development. Comes out to about 12 grand, 12,5 per unit. I just got through having a conversation with them and said, is that going to be enough to be useful? And they said, yes, it will, because it's a community land trust model, so the land price is divorced from the construction price, I mean, from the house price. So it's not, it's not an all or nothing. It's not an all or nothing. It's a bunch of trade-offs. So the ideas that you've had, Counselor, are valuable when we have that kind of discussion about how to best structure this, or even if it should be something that we end up doing.
I didn't know that you were working with community land trust, but that's a good example. We've got a community land trust action coming up in a few minutes. So, okay, if you have other thoughts about this or any of the other ones, Eunice will certainly be happy to hear from you. All right, so then switching over to looking at partnership actions. So this is an action about supporting development of permanent supportive housing. So this is not just income restricted housing, but this is income restricted housing with onsite wraparound services. This is most important to people who are exiting homelessness or very high risk of homelessness, often for people with mental illness and/or substance abuse issues. So this is a very hard-to-serve category of people who have a lot of unmet housing needs. And so this would be a partnership action where you're looking at supporting developers, organizations to develop permanent supportive housing. You've done this with Sequoia Crossings, a 10, 60-unit project in northeast Salem. So you'd be looking at providing potentially financial support to developers, organizations, or partners to develop permanent supportive housing. And so funding for this might well be something that you take from the city's safety and livability bond or federal funding.
If I may, I just, again, I'm trying to understand what's possible for the city. And you said this is primarily for folks that are under 60%?
Usually considerably below that, but certainly under 60%.
Which is about 40% of the Salem's population, or like 64,000 people.
Well, not all of them need permanent supportive housing.
Do we have an understanding of what percentage do? I mean, what size of program are we talking about?
Well, I don't necessarily have that information.
I was involved in running a fair housing council and providing housing assistance to people in my younger days, and we did about 500 to 800, and that was pretty good. But still, this is like an immense problem.
It is an immense problem.
I'm trying to just understand with limited dollars, limited capacity to administer programs, when I look at numbers like these, it's just, it's kind of frightening to me a little bit.
So I think it comes down to the fact that when you think about any of these in terms of absolute targets, you can't fix the problem. Can you make the problem less bad? Can you lessen the problem? And I think the answer here is permanent supportive housing is one of those ways to make parts of the problem less bad and help people exit homelessness or avoid homelessness who might well become long-term homeless.
So there's a potential to target some of this towards a criteria of people who are, I mean, there's a set of people that are very hard to reach in the homeless population for a number of different reasons. And then there are a set of people who, because of, you know, a whole range of circumstances, are, you know, not housed or not safely housed, but have the potential with support to move out of that and into a longer. So is that kind of, is this program, what you're talking about, is that a little bit more focused in terms, I see you had nods, so I'm done, thank you.
That's what those services onsite are for. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say how much I support permanent supportive housing. And Shaw is one of the best housing authorities in the country. And don't take my word for it, take the national group that gave him award acknowledging that. And for Sequoia Crossings, that was no single pot of money. They went out there and found a lot of different funds, so it wasn't just Salem's money that made Sequoia Crossings. So I just wanted to put a pin in that because I think that is huge. And yes, it's one of those problems we cannot solve, but I feel strongly and remind myself of this daily. There's, the fact that I cannot solve the work alone doesn't relieve me my obligation to do my part. That's how I feel as a philosophy.
Yeah, you'll make me cry with that one. So, indeed. And as Michael said, looking at opportunities to leverage the funding that you have through those partnerships and essentially helping fill some of the gaps in the fundings to make things more possible. So, okay. So this is another action of looking at expanding access to housing for areas of high opportunity. So you'd have to define, what do you mean by areas of high opportunity? And this may well be things in something like an urban renewal district or outside of an urban renewal district. But you might look at the city's opportunity to purchase land and to assemble sites into something that is large enough to be developed, or provide other financial incentives for affordable or mixed income housing in places that are near jobs, parks, transportation, and other services. So this gets at one of the comments that I've heard a number of times here about development of housing on your transit corridors in walkable areas. And so I think when you think about these things, they don't, all these actions don't stand alone as little islands. A number of these actions build on each other. And so you might be looking at, you know, opportunities for this as it's related to your Mootip, or opportunities in selected areas of an urban renewal district where you're getting potentially some market rate housing or near market rate housing. So, so yes, this is accessing areas of affluence more. Continue to affirmatively further fair housing. So this is things like partnering with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon to conduct landlord trainings and investigate complaints. You already do that, but considering opportunities to do that a little bit more, and to partner with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon to do a little more trainings, those kind of things. All right, I'm gonna take us on. All right, I knew we'd get to the land trust eventually. So look at opportunities to partner with community land trusts. So providing financial or other support for community land trusts. You're doing this now, you've done this before. This is an opportunity to get housing that is affordable for homeownership, where essentially it's usually limited equity in the housing. So the first person who buys it, you know, I buy that housing and I sell it in 10, 20, 30 years. People often stay in this housing a long time. And I get part of the equity out of it, so it's helped with some wealth building. But the next person who buys it, it remains affordable at the same sort of affordability level in the future. And so that's how you help support access to homeownership and wealth building, again, through the kind of actions that we've been talking about this evening. Yes, sir?
That's a whole conversation we could have, but I know we can't have it tonight. So you said wealth building, generational wealth, helping families and marginalized communities that typically do not have access to that.
A lot of land trusts do that, yeah.
Right. So we have that here in Salem?
Yeah, you've got examples of that. The Dev Northwest. Okay, you've got one.
We only have one? And where is it at? Just because I'm bad.
McClay.
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 Who's, is that your ward? Matthews?
So, Ms. Rutherford, might you step down again and just discuss how, because you and I have had conversations about land trust, and you might just share some more information.
I think, thinking back to the conversations that we've had, we've talked about the role that the city could play with land that we've already acquired or future land that we could purchase to help also, you know, further write down the cost. There's acreage that we acquired when we bought right of way for Marine Drive that I cannot tell you the exact amount of acres right now because it was a few years ago, and that is out of the memory banks. But we bought that extra land with the intention of being able to use it for future affordable housing development, and it would be suitable for a land trust. So that's one example where we've been kind of, you know, casting our nets, looking out into the future, taking advantage of an opportunity to prepare for doing something like this. It's also something that we've considered as we look at our own federal funds, our CDBG and home funds, whether or not this may be something where we want to, you know, further channel funding for acquisition, whether it's money that we use for that acquisition for future land trusts, or if it's something that we wanted to do with a further, or future urban renewal area. Urban renewal area in a lot of communities does play a role of assembling property for development.
So you've just perfectly described how this can layer on together many different things. Any other questions?
Any other questions from Ms. Rutherford?
No, I appreciate that. I just, I have a feeling, and again, this is me, all my words, the information that you're sharing tonight is just, is phenomenal. And so for someone like me as a young junior counselor, I have a gazillion questions. And all my questions are centered in a very healthy place because when I look at the folks that are just not in Ward 5, but throughout the city, if a lot of people that are on the brink of becoming homeless, and I'm just telling the truth. And you have people right now that are without a home. And so I'm always thinking And so I'm always thinking and strategizing how to best serve so many different communities and families. And so, and I don't take that lightly.
Sure.
Because at the end of the day, somebody has to be a voice for that individual. And I'm a firm believer that we have to be a voice for those that are considered, they see themselves as not having a voice, right? And we live in America to where there are some people who believe that owning a home is the dream to be in an American. But we are in a society right now that sees that as not a dream, it's almost like a nightmare. And so I bring that to this particular space, because when we think about what we're trying to do holistically, it makes sense that we would want to help certain communities to build some kind of generational wealth, because that's how you close the gap.
Yes.
And I know I'm sitting among subject matter experts in that, because if we don't have that conversation for those communities, then who will? See how quiet it is? If we don't talk about those conversations here, then we don't have the, we don't have the opportunity. And so it's almost like we have to upset the system in order to make the system benefit those communities who are not being served. Right?
That's what I think land trusts can contribute to.
Okay. Well, thank you. Because at the end of the day, a part of me says, I would want to hear more of this, but I don't want to hear it in a silo, because I tend to learn better when I'm surrounded by all of my colleagues, because I'm a firm believer that when you have diverse opinions and perspectives, then we can all grow and do better. And I know in this setting, we have quite a few, you know, real estate, subject matter experts. And so when it comes time to making changes, whether it's with fair housing or with codes, I just believe that there's a lot of good work that we could do. So thank you for sharing. I know I can be long-winded, but, you know, thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions about community land trusts? Yes, sir. Joaquin?
And briefly, my understanding is that CLT's resale profits are capped. Is that true?
When you say tapped, I, capped, yes, they're limited equity, generally.
Generally, I think this is a pretty robust idea that merits kind of further development. I guess my question would be, is what ideas you have around how, at what level it's capped, and what financial equity considerations that might have for local communities here in Salem? Should this, should?
I think it depends. This is really something that you'd have to discuss with the community land trust to understand what their model is. I've also heard some criticisms of limited-equity land trusts, because they don't allow the household to capture the full increased equity of the unit. So you have to have that balance, so that you're still passing on long-term affordability as well as allowing for some intergenerational wealth building. And when you're looking at this, when you're looking at building this through, you know, multiple different actions, as we talked about, maybe you have a down payment assistance that helps your community land trust. Maybe you're looking at publicly-owned land that is put into the land trust, you know, with, without cost or with minimal cost to it. Other types of actions that are supporting that kind of development. That's, I think, where you get a little bit more opportunity to do more good, in other words, to help more households. But the specifics of how they cap, how they limit the equity, I think that's something you'd have to talk to a specific community land trust about.
Thank you. And, you know, echo Counselor Brown's points around finding exciting, creative, and innovative ways to tackle these problems. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Certainly. All right. So some other proposed actions, funding infrastructure for housing. So looking at places that are perhaps high opportunity for housing, or where you can get more housing built, if only you didn't have too small a water line, or a sewer line, or some transportation infrastructure that needed to be put in. So you're already doing this. This would be doing this a little bit more, obviously lobbying the legislature for funding for this. This is what I think the legislature is looking at putting funding, more funding in for infrastructure, specifically for things like this. Yes, sir?
One thing I, I think we should be careful about is to make sure that by funding this infrastructure for housing, we're not significantly increasing the city's maintenance liability for this infrastructure. I'm thinking like if we've got a major new apartment building at the very edge of the city, expanding, you know, say our transit network, and our water, sewer, stormwater, streets, all that infrastructure, that's going to cost a lot of money to repair and replace in 50 years. Whereas if, you know, you did some infill-style development that maybe served the same amount of people, it would cost less to maintain overall, because we're not expanding our network. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is, I believe affordable transportation infrastructure also needs to be considered if we're, you know, talking sidewalks, safer bike infrastructure, expanded public transit. Because like we mentioned with the parking lot situation, there might be a large parking lot that might be a good site for development, but, you know, a developer might not be excited about removing parking capacity, because people can't access their site without a car. So I think that, you know, transit projects, bike projects, walking projects, all that stuff really needs to be considered.
I believe those kind of considerations go into your infrastructure planning, and we part and parcel of it. And I think would, again, relate back to some of the other actions, like identifying areas with high opportunity. Maybe you've got a good area for development, and what it lacks is, like I said, a bigger sewer pipe or something like that. But it has a lot of other advantages. So looking for those areas that are more efficient in that way.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. So advocating for manufactured home park residents, so looking at advocating for changes in state laws to prevent, protect people who are living in manufactured home parks from displacement. So that would be a lobbying action. And then the last one is raising awareness of your existing programs. So, you know, is there more you can do with outreach to local developers? More you can do with your, what do you call it, with your website, that kind of thing? I'll also mention that there are a number of recommended actions that just didn't make the list, that will be included in the HPS for future consideration. And I can talk about those, but I want to answer your question first.
Sure. This was not covered in your slides, but I was at the annual fundraiser for Center 50+ and they talked about seniors finding roommates. So that may not necessarily be a government function.
Yeah.
But I have delivered meals for Meals on Wheels, and there are a lot of seniors who live alone in a four-bedroom house. And many of them would love to have someone they would feel safe living with, just someone who, in exchange, were helping them out for a few of the things that they can't really do themselves. That would create more safety for seniors whose various abilities and needs can slowly but surely increase over time. But it could also help solve some of the housing needs. And so, again, is that a city government solution? Maybe not. But Center 50+ briefly mentioned something about a roommate program for a lot of seniors. And I feel that that's another area that wouldn't solve our affordable housing crisis, but it's, it could be another piece of the puzzle.
And so, you know, maybe that's something that the city looks into if there's an opportunity for partnership with that. And this raising opportunity, raising awareness for existing programs, that might be something that the city can, you know, have a link on the website, provide, you know, information about inappropriate areas.
Right. I mean, what if you're, what if you're a senior and you're, you know, it's almost like you could apply as the senior person who's, yes, I'm interested in being matched. Or you could apply as the other person, as the other buddy. You would want to have a thorough vetting system. You want to make sure, elder abuse is so prevalent that there's a full-time prosecutor at the Oregon Department of Justice dedicated to elder abuse prosecutions. So you would want to be extremely careful about how you go about doing it, but that doesn't mean it can't be done, it just has to be done right.
I think that's in choosing your partnership carefully. So are there any comments or questions that we haven't covered? Anything you see here that you're like, yeah, we shouldn't be talking about this?
He said shouldn't we, or should?
Should not.
I guess my question is, what's a community in Oregon that is outbuilding others?
For doing this kind of thing really well?
Just, what's the, what's the city or municipality in Oregon that's building more, is sort of outbuilding?
I always want to quote Bend. Bend has had a very robust affordable housing program for a long time. They're getting, they're growing faster than just about any city in Oregon. I'm not saying they're producing more dwelling units than Salem is producing, because I haven't looked at that kind of comparison, but Bend is an interesting example.
I guess I ask that just in terms of, some of these are farther away from the idea of housing production
Yeah.
than others. They're, they're getting to some other goal besides actually increasing the amount of units produced.
And so if you think about this, this isn't just about housing production, it's about preservation and increasing access to housing. So I think the name Housing Production Strategy is a little bit unfortunate, but that's, that's what the state named it. And so this is getting at the, the whole set of things is getting at the broader issue of increasing equitable access to housing. Thinking about things from affordable rental units, affordable homeownership, increasing housing stability, opportunity for housing for people experiencing homelessness, increasing housing choice, especially for your marginalized populations, increasing access to locations that have those, those higher amenities essentially. So it's really a sort of a mixture of all of that, trying to get to that set of kind of outcomes.
Yeah, I guess my thought, and just, this is just my honest feedback about it, is going back to the three pages of statistics that I think we all find alarming about the unaffordability of housing. And when I look at that supply and demand curve, like in real time, we're not increasing our supply to meet the demand for housing, that's the result.
Well...
And so my, my suggestion would be, as we look at these, is really ask ourselves, what of these actions would change Salem just mirroring the rest of what's going on in Oregon, which is what we've been doing for, it would appear to be, the last 12 years?
So none of them taken alone is going to make that change. And it's not just about housing supply. It's beyond housing supply. It's about preservation. That's one of the, and increasing stability, decreasing displacement, that kind of thing. And then it also, as I said, goes off to equitable access. So some of the zoning things we're talking about, all these things are marginal actions or actions at the margin. Like doing what you're talking about, making a functional housing market across the Willamette Valley, for instance, requires so much building of housing, that I think over time, we may well get to a housing market that is functioning better. I don't think we're getting here in the next five years. So these are our actions that I think will be built on in the future, just like you're building on your past actions.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments. I believe the current number, and I'll look to Eunice in case she knows, is we have about 450 building permits issued so far this calendar year. That's for housing, that's for individual and multifamily housing together. That's a little bit up from the past couple of years, but not disproportionate. The biggest number we had, surprisingly, right before the financial boom, was 750 units. So that's kind of our biggest year ever, before it collapsed the economy. So, you know, what we can get to, I'm not sure, but the big change has been the shift from single-family homes to multifamily homes. So there's been a pronounced swing up in multifamily homes. The important thing to remember is that when we talk about multifamily homes, we're talking about like the three-bedroom walk-up giant clusters, that I think have some of their own challenges, even as they provide housing. So that's, that's a little bit of background that I hope is helpful for the council. The other thing I worry about is just, is trying to put together programs with statistics, and kind of the facts of who we're trying to accomplish, and what's realistic given the size of our government and our resources. And the more targeted, I think, that we can be about our approach to this problem, as much as we want to be wide and create all these layers, I find, in my experience, like Salem tries to be very ambitious about what we're able to accomplish, and we want to take on all sorts of things, and that's just increasingly hard to justify. So I guess my feedback from the Planning Commission, where you just had a presentation that we can't afford our sewer system, that we want to be thoughtful about how we go at this.
Counselor Matthews has a question.
Well, I was just, I was going to do, say two things. So one, did we meet with the home builders and the realtors and kind of the different development community to get their, their take on this plan, and what was their kind of outcome to this? Did they feel like these were all measurably impactful things?
Eunice, I wasn't really in on those discussions myself.
I would say there was general support, but there is definitely some aspects that the development committee really wanted us to look at, like the code was a big one. I think there was a lot of feedback that we didn't, not to just incentivize multifamily middle of housing, affordable housing, but also look at barriers to single family as well. And so we had changed the wording on one of them to be broader, to include all housing types. That was a big piece of feedback we got.
Gotcha. And then the other, the other thing I would say is to kind of jump off Counselor Tiger and Mr. Slater's points, that I'm struggling a little bit with this, only because it feels idealistic a little bit, but I don't actually have any numbers to know, like, how much of this is really going to really make an impact. And so it's hard to say, let's approve this eventually, and vote on this as a thing we're going to go forward with, when we haven't really dug into this and said, how much is this actually going to prioritize and make any type of real impact on this line? So I think that's a struggle for me. And then also, you mentioned kind of a targeted approach, and I think that goes to this, is that this is almost too wide, because it doesn't actually say that this is targeted, we're hitting any of these things. We're just taking this wide berth and hoping one of these things work, or all of these things work. And so that'd be my biggest kind of concern with this, in giving it approval, is that it doesn't really tell me how much of an impact it's really going to have, or at least projected.
We haven't tried to project specific numbers. There'll be some, some numbers of dwelling units in this, but a lot of it, it depends on how much land are you talking about for something like community land trusts? If you're talking about an acre or two, or three, that's going to have a much smaller impact than if you have more land for that. So how much resources can be put into any one thing? So, and a lot of those discussions, they just haven't happened at this point. They happen in the implementation of this. We will bring back as much information about that as we can.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to bring up one part that I think, I don't think we've touched on maybe quite enough, because this is a very quantitative discussion around creating housing, which is, of course, important, and we don't have enough of it. But we also need to consider the qualitative standpoint. The built environment and where people live is so critical. And they have to feel like the space that they are spending time in and raising families in is not only supporting them, but they also feel valued. And so I think that needs to be a lens that we put across all of these. And some of them have, I think, more opportunity than others to leverage programs that we do have in existence, and ensure that, you know, yes, there are probably areas we can expedite permitting and things like that. However, some of those things are put in place for long-term, sustainable communities, so that people continue wanting to move here. This is a place that they feel seen, they feel supported, and they can live their best life. So let's maybe just make sure that we keep that in mind, and it's not only a numbers game.
Okay, with that, I... Okay, with that, I, okay, go ahead, counselor.
Well, first of all, I agree with everything Commissioner Faat mentioned. Secondly, you know, you covered a lot of ground tonight. I think you did an excellent job with all of our questions. At the council level, something that I think helps my colleagues and I is, you know, for knowing what they will cost in terms of taxpayer dollars. We need to know that, especially for any kind of tax incentive program that takes money away from our general fund is something that's very top of mind. But I know from other reports that we've received from other bodies, it's always helpful to see what are some short-term goals? What are things we could change this year? What are things we could start and finish this year? What are medium range and what are long-term range? And, you know, knowing what the cost benefit analysis for all of those things is very helpful. And I wholeheartedly agree with the need to continue to make inroads in surveying our marginalized communities. That's a big deal to me. I don't see the state or other governments coming to our rescue anytime soon for individuals who have high needs because those high-needs people, if we don't house them, the streets will house them. And then we will hear about it and then those people will get hurt or worse. So, I mean, I can tell you what my personal priorities are. And I, I recognize that homeownership is an American ideal. I know plenty of people my generation who have already written that off as out of the question. I think homeownership is something that I would love to see more information on. I know that was one of the proposals in here. But I'd also like to remind folks that when you have affordable housing, people can save money for the dream that they want. And that dream might be going back to school. That dream might be putting their child through school. That dream might be homeownership. But when you can actually not spend half of your income for the privilege of having a roof over your head, the dream that you want is a matter of saving money and being fiscally responsible if you can find a place within your price range. So, that's just something I, that I think about, that affordable housing, a lot of problems naturally go away when you're not spending 50% or 30% of your income.
That's certainly true. So, the housing production strategy will include an implementation schedule. I wouldn't necessarily confuse the schedule necessarily with what's the highest priority. Sometimes you have to accomplish something before you accomplish something else. One of the other comments I'll make is that certain things, certain of the actions are on their own necessary, but not sufficient to result in development of a lot more housing, especially housing that is affordable. So, your zoning code changes may well be necessary to, to get more housing. They may not be on their own sufficient to get more housing that is affordable. And that's why we're looking at this, this really, we are looking at it this in a wide range, but in the context of your other programs and what you've already done and how these pieces can fit together. So, what the city's requirement is in this is you adopt your housing production strategy, you adopt an implementation schedule in there, and then you begin to implement the actions. And I promise you, there will be some action out of this that after you've done some of the work of looking at it closer, you realize this is not the appropriate action for the city. And so, what do you do at that point? At that point, you work with the state to remove that action from your housing production strategy and possibly substitute in another action in its place. I think almost every city that, that is implementing a housing production strategy is going to run into that at least once and probably multiple times. So, this is the action plan to, to get you to the next set of steps.
Okay, thank you. So, the next steps are developing the HPS?
The HPS, yep.
Right.
We've already got it most of the way drafted. We're just working on getting the responses to your questions here.
Sure, sure. I was just thinking about when Counselor Matthews and Counselor Nordike were talking about things they wanted to know. I really appreciated, for instance, the strategies in our climate action plan and how it identified certain categories. And I'm thinking of like housing bang for their buck, the cost to the city, whether it requires partners or not, how much it benefits in terms of accessibility or affordability, either way.
Those kind of things will be in there.
Long-term, short-term, but something kind of more in a, like a table or a summary. That, that would be helpful for me.
I have a dozen tables. Yes, we have tables. There will be tables that summarize.
Okay.
So, as well as providing the details. So...
All right. Counselor Brown, go ahead.
Thank you. And just for a point of order, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is all informational. So, Ms. Goodman, thank you because obviously there's a lot that I learned tonight and I have at least, at least 101 more questions. I really do. There are some things I would like to see. So, one of the things you had mentioned was on Slide 30 in regards to manufactured homes. We have a high percentage of folks in Salem who live in trailer parks. And so, I'm not exactly sure if we have a plan in place that protects a lot of our senior citizens from, you know, one or two payments away from being on the street. That to me is concerning, very concerning. And you had mentioned earlier that we need to do more lobbying for that particular generation of folk. Because at the end of the day, that's still a community that needs a voice, right? So, I would say I need to see more about that. Second, I would also say that, I don't think we've said this tonight, you've mentioned a lot of subsidies and funds and HUD and all that. I have a concern as to what's going to come out of the Oval Office that's going to impact that particular funding source. Because I don't want to hang my hat on anything that comes from that direction that's going to create that trajectory and having more people on the street. It does not make sense to urban at all because it sounds like to me, we create a homeless problem for ourselves and then we turn around and try to fix it. It's a bunch of bull bularky, if such a word exists. Because I can tell you right now, when we look, because I think Counselor Nordike said it, we may want to look to the state to fix a lot of things. But the last time I checked, the state has not fixed the housing problem at all. And they are still asking for nearly a billion dollars since they've been in office. And they said that they were going to create 36,000 homes. Not half of those have been built. So, we create a problem and then we come back to the same body of people asking for more money to fix the problem.
Well, I understand that there are bills in the legislature about funding infrastructure, that kind of thing.
There are some.
Let's assume that one of them passes. I would hate to see Salem not have the opportunity be, not be thinking about, you know, applying for that. That is part of the action around infrastructure, for instance. It's not the only part of it, but it is part of that, that infrastructure. If you continue to have federal funds, then I think, you know, thinking about how you're using them in the context of the opportunities we've talked about and the trade-offs with other actions, I think that's appropriate. So, but I, I don't disagree with you. I, I think that there's funding difficulties in the future.
Oh, in the future?
Well, more funding difficulties in the future.
I think, I think we're there. No, seriously. Thank you tonight.
Certainly.
This is very eye-opening and there's a lot more great work that we got to do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think, Eunice, are you coming up to the podium?
She's done.
She is not. Okay, good. I thought she was.
I would just like to thank, there's a lot of staff that came from different departments that have been supporting throughout this whole project. So, I wanted to thank them for all coming out and thank you for your time and questions. We will get a draft report out to all of you before we have the public hearings, right? So, you'll have more of that detail. And thank you.